Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the fifteen hundred and seventy-eighth regular meeting of the Board of Alderman of the City of St. Anne, Missouri, held at City Hall on Monday, October seventh, twenty twenty-four, at seven P. M. Alderman Murphy, can you lead the board in? Plaques de la Iglesia, please. We will have a motion signed afterwards.
Plaques de la Iglesia, to the flag, United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could all remain standing, remain standing, please. We'd like to honor Jim Lambs, who worked on our golf course, Catherine Baderat, longtime resident, Lou Bacon, who worked on the Board of Adjustment and Beautification, he was also the father of astronaut Bob Bacon, and please the victims and survivors of Hurricane Helen. Thank you. Matt Roca?
Everybody took a little shot, excuse me.
Hey, I want to inform the audience of the agendas and public speaker cards available in the back of the room. If a resident would like to address the board during the public comment section of the agenda, please fill out the speaker card, have it ready. I want to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Alderman, and public comments will be entertained during specific times set aside on the agenda. Okay, approval of minutes, please. Five twenty-eight, twenty-four, eight twenty-six, twenty-four, ten thirty, twenty-three, nine three, twenty-four, and nine thirty, twenty-four, special meeting. I need a first and a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, minutes are approved. We have a special feedback request from the wash bucket. The wash bucket like to speak up?
Good evening, everybody. It's actually for our trunk or treat. We do it every year, this will be our third year doing it. We got a, we turn our car washing into a makeshift corner house. We got bouncy houses, candy, fire department be there this year, live music. It's nice. Last year it was a big rain, and we still had a good turnout. So this year we're hoping to be a little bit better. Y'all know the kids, give away prizes of every hour. We do like, for the costume.
Face painting, bikes, muni tickets, we give away Christmas lights last year, so.
Y'all know the kids, bring them, it's the twenty-sixth of October, it's from three to seven.
Yes.
So, thank you.
I have a question before you start.
Did you mow the lawn?
Okay, folks, I need a first and a second, please.
First and second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. All right, we'll start our public hearing. Public hearing for special use permit for one-one-one-four-zero Old St. Charles Rock Road. And especially, yeah, let's start with that one. Is anyone here from one-one-one-four-zero Old St. Charles? So Bob?
So the applicant, John Goodbrake, he is a rental shuttle facility, and he was proposing to have an additional sixty-five additional buses parked adjacent to the main center parking lot at the rear of the building.
What, P and Z?
P and Z gave a four-three to not approve.
Thank you. I guess we'll move on to the second one for thirty-five ninety-eight Eddie Rude. How you doing?
Hello? Kevin Roberts, here for Eddie Rude.
Yeah, please tell the board about your ideas.
So, Mike Basile has been running D and M Auto Service for thirty-nine years at Eddie Rude, and we recently, he's retired, so we purchased the business from him, and we're going to continue what he did, just newer and a little more modern, and we're really excited to be here, and really looking forward to be a part of the community.
You've got some big shoes to fill, because he was an open-minded gentleman that probably liked it, so yet. How many employees you gonna have?
It's gonna be just me and my wife for now.
Does she do the oil changes and grease job and alignment, or what?
That's extra.
Are you okay? And then how about your hours?
We're gonna be Monday through Friday, seven-thirty to five, and some Saturdays depending on business.
I know, I don't know if you talked to Joe from Mission Auto down the street, he's wanting to talk to you, get with you and all that, because.
I have not yet.
You have not yet. He doesn't want to talk to you, because, you know, he had a, he had a nice agreement with the previous guy at D and M. They actually worked out real good with, between them, with passing information.
Yeah, I'll be sure to contact him.
All right, any other questions?
Any other comments?
Sure.
Tom, Lee, I'm Lee Ward, probably from the local. And I just want to say that according to the county records, that building was built in nineteen sixty, I believe, with this gas station. It's been Mike's for thirty to thirty-nine years, before that it was the guy named Dan, and before that the guy named Mike, and before that it was before my time. But I just think it's, the whole area is full of local family businesses. I think this will complement the area very nicely. There shouldn't be any problems, we have no problems, I know of, unless you guys do, in that it's been last thirty years, so.
I got to speak with them at the car show, I mean, they've got a lovely family, and they have some great ideas for the city.
We want to thank both of you for choosing St. Anne, for keeping your business here.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
And because I have to ask, are there any opponents? All right, hearing none, I need a motion for a first and a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Special use permit for thirty-five ninety-eight Eddie Rude. Can you take a look at that one, too? Oh, okay, so I will also need a motion to approve for, yeah, a motion to approve eleven-one-four-zero Old St. Charles. Do I ask for proponents? Are there any opponents to eleven-one-four-zero Old St. Charles Rock Road? Hearing none?
Well, before we go like others. Bobby, all that been done, last time you was talking about how he didn't do this and didn't do that.
Oh, sir.
Is it still like it was?
Yes, sir.
Eddie still had buses on the parking, still had buses on the parking lot over the last week, too.
I don't want to approve it, if he got, like, still got what Bob says he had last time.
I don't think it's coming to the proof.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
What were you talking about? Talking about the bus thing, or?
Yeah, bus thing.
Oh, yeah, I don't like that.
All right, so then, I will ask if there's a first or second motion. Hearing none, so.
It does.
It just does. Thank you. All right, at this time, any public comments on the agenda items that we have on the agenda? If anyone would like to speak on agenda items? Okay, moving on. Introduction of Bills and Resolutions. First reading of Bill number thirty-four sixty-four, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a Bandit chipper. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four sixty-four, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a Bandit chipper.
This is a lun chipper for the State Department and for the NUC's Department, so help them in renewal treatments.
Can I ask you a question? What is and why they using the phrase Bandit?
That's the name of the.
Chipper?
Chipper.
Okay, the company's name is that. Okay, okay, okay. I just wanted to hear.
I thought that was cute.
I just didn't want a Bandit running around.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
No, just be careful with it.
Okay, we need a first and second motion, please.
Second.
Okay, Matt Roca?
Dasinger.
Aye.
Marino.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four sixty-four becomes ordinance number thirty-three seventy.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, first reading of Bill number thirty-four sixty-five, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into agreements with MoDOT and Howard R. Green for the reconstruction of Wright Avenue. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four sixty-five, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into agreements with MoDOT and Howard R. Green for the reconstruction of Wright Avenue. Matt?
This is the first phase of Wright Avenue, so this will be starting at the St. Charles Rock Road end, and take, go down about halfway down Wright Avenue. This is a federal project, so the state is, through the federal government, is paying eighty percent of the work. So this will allow us to enter into the agreement with MoDOT, and also get Howard R. Green on board to start doing the area work on.
And it looked like it just went, just past St. Stevens?
This one's going to have to be completely built?
Yeah, this is a reconstruction.
Okay.
Yep.
And sidewalks. Yes, thank God, that street will finally get sidewalks. Does the board have any questions? Okay, need a first and second motion, please.
Second.
Thank you, Matt Roca?
Dasinger.
Aye.
Marino.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four sixty-five becomes ordinance number thirty-three seventy-one. First reading of Bill number thirty-four sixty-six, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into agreements with Dugan Construction and Sessions Pictures for Building Improvements. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four sixty-six, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into agreements with Dugan Construction and Sessions Pictures for Building Improvements. Matt?
This is a change order for the building renovations here at City Hall, the Police Department. The first one is for the locker rooms in the Police Department, so this does the showers, and will take care of the flooring in the Police Department locker rooms. The second item is the furnishings for the kitchen breakroom area, that's really to go, except for the refrigerator, freezer, and ice maker, so that allows to get that.
Want any questions?
How old is many of these equipments that we were expecting, twenty years, thirty years?
Oh, yeah, the refrigerator wasn't even new, when they put it in, twenty-plus years.
Right.
Before me. The straighter there.
Yeah, before straighter?
While, while straighter was here. We didn't have.
All right, we need a first and a second motion, please.
Second.
Matt Roca?
Dasinger.
Aye.
Marino.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Croney.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four sixty-six becomes ordinance number thirty-three seventy-two. Okay, any questions over the monthly warrants for reports? And I need a first and a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion is passed. All right, we now enter to, into the public comment section of non-agenda items. Dr. Kilbright, would you like to come up first?
Good evening, my name is Chris Kilbright, I'm the superintendent of the Rittner School District, and I'd like to speak on two items tonight. First, very excited, as you may have known, we purchased the former Holy Trinity property. We are in the process of abating the space now, and we look forward to relocating one of our district programs for our International Welcome Center, for students that are new to the community, very excited about that, along with our Center for Gifted Education, so our elementary gifted program, as well as some early childhood classrooms at that space, so that work is going on, very excited to partner with the City of St. Anne to make that happen. Also, the reason that I'm here tonight, probably the main reason, is I would like to give thanks to the City of St. Anne, and specifically the St. Anne Police Department. St. Anne Police Department is just an absolutely critical piece of the work that we do in the Rittner School District, to educate the six thousand four hundred and fifty students across our ten schools. As you may know, we have St. Anne SROs in two of our buildings, we have Dalton at Hake, and we have three officers at Rittner High School, with the third being added on a temporary basis at that point, at this point, because you know, recently we've had some challenges with some cyber threats in the Rittner School District, just as schools in the St. Louis area, schools in Missouri, and schools across the country are unfortunately dealing with this spate of cyber threats. And I will tell you, it is the St. Anne Police Department that we turn to when we get word of a threat. The first call is to our SROs, the next call is immediately to Chief Jimenez, as well as to other members of the St. Anne team. When I go to superintendent meetings at Education Plus, there's seventy-seven school districts that make up Education Plus, the home office is right off of Craig Road in Creve Court, the first question that gets asked is, how are you all so successful in the Rittner School District to get to the bottom of these cyber threats? Because we have a hundred percent track record, if there is a threat that is made from a local actor, a hundred percent of the time those people are caught, and it is only possible because of the work of the St. Anne Police Department, specifically the detectives that get involved immediately in those cases. There was a very high-profile situation about two weeks ago, where there was a former student that made the choice to post a picture that caused staff and students to be in fear of their lives, and was counter to the good order of the schools. In that situation, first call was to Chief Jimenez, and with twenty-four, within twenty-four minutes, it was identified who that person was, and that person was apprehended in Overland. So I just wanted to thank you for allowing the St. Anne officers to work in our district, and I wanted to thank the chief and all the members of the team for keeping us and keeping our students safe. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, Mary Brags, would you like to come up next?
Yeah, I did have some handouts earlier, I didn't know if everyone got one.
Yes, my name is Carrie Brags, and I'm coming for you tonight, proposing an after-school program or class for at-risk teen boys, and so this, the handout kind of gives you a little background on what it looks like, but me, myself, I, my background is ministry, and I've been working with at-risk youth, youth in some capacity for over twenty years. I've worked with my church, at work, children's home, and for the past seven years, I was working at Marion Elementary School as the behavior interventionist, so Dr. Kilbright was my, was my boss, so he knows me, and so, but also, back in two thousand fifteen, it was on my heart to work with at-risk youth, and so at that point in time, I left my job that I was at for twenty years to pursue that, and that's how I ended up working at Marion Elementary. But the program I'm proposing, it talks to them about teaching them life skills, as well as things they may want to pursue, if they're pursuing music, or being an artist or different things, just giving them a plan and a way to move forward, is also how to find resources, and giving them resources as well, to walk alongside them, to help them focus on something more positive, instead of just other things that they have before them. And so, does anyone have any questions, or?
I do.
Yes.
Hello, how are you?
All right.
I know we met, and we're great. I see that you're gonna do every, four sessions, and you're gonna hold them every two weeks over a period of time.
Yes.
Do you have certain content that you will be using, any type of content, paperwork that the students will be filling out, so you can collect data of how they're improving, and you got any scale in your program?
Yes, yes, it'll, it'll be, as you can see, let me. Where it talks about the core topics for each session, so they focus on specific things, so the first one is teaching them how to have a positive mindset, so within that, we provide the tools to them as far as what does that look like. So I'll be pointing them towards different, like, videos, and tools, or podcasts, and just, you know, kind of different things that I use myself, that can help them start seeing the difference between what they're focused on, what they're using their time for, as far as us having conversations as well within the class on where they're at, and, you know, what they're thinking, and what they're headed towards. So, yes, I will be tracking that within the class as well.
Would you like to, are you gonna work with our Police Department, which I think is a great, will be a great resource for you, to work with those young men?
I'm sorry.
Working with our Police Department, I don't know if Mike is my best.
No, I don't think it is.
Working with our Police Department, to work with the youth, the young men, to talk to the chief and the detectives here, to work with them, to get them understanding with that partnership of understanding how our law enforcement work with the community and young men to understand the laws and things of that nature.
Yeah, my idea after talking to Mr. Brags was that maybe the chief and Tim would get together with him afterwards, if you guys all thought this was a good idea, and figure out a way for him to put his program together.
Love it. Having experience, and also, Dr. Kilbright, thank you for those comments, working as a dare officer and school resource officer for the first almost ten years of my career, having to deal with kids at risk, with Positive Transitions Program, back then with PTP, taught me a lot, so we would love to do that, and we definitely have a lot of young officers that would love to interact.
Yes, that would be wonderful.
And I know at the Community Center, we've already, you know, board-approved years ago, an after-school program, so I think we only do that two days a week now, but that might be a starting point for things to give, you know, they want to play basketball or volleyball or something like that, too.
Yes, and also.
Give them some fun.
Yeah, that too, and that was, I'm sorry, that was part I left off as well, as far as, one of the key things is building those relationships with them, and like you were saying, just doing things with them, because that's part of what I did in the past, where we would discuss a topic, we would hang out afterwards, we would eat, play basketball, or they liked playing on the Xbox, you know, I would get on it with them and lose most of the times, but it was a way to connect and relate to them, yes.
Also, I give out ideas, that's what I do. Maybe you can also reach back into the Rittner School District, right, and pull some of those young men, or a past deal as well, right, and inside of our community as well, to work with them.
Yes, I would definitely love that.
Yep, most definitely.
I have pondered, you said this already, but where are you gonna have this?
I discussed with the mayor about possibly having it at the Community Center.
So that's something he'll have to work out with the chief and Tim. If the board, does the board think it's a good idea?
Do you know what days of the week you will be holding these programs? Will it be on weekends?
I figure we could probably discuss that to see, you know, what may work out best, but I'm open to either or, but I think the first choice would probably be during the week, sometime during the week, maybe, yes.
Do you know how many?
That, now, that would depend on if I have volunteers helping out, but in my mind, I was looking at at least maybe, you know, fifteen to twenty to.
So I'd also like to offer our green roof, it's a good place, too, for learning, and then if Tim doesn't have anything, we'll get hooked up down there, let us offer that to you, too, so.
Okay.
Be nice for you.
What is the cost of the program for the students? Is this a free program, or is it a tuition-based type of thing?
Well, that is, I was discussing that with the mayor to see the best way to move forward as far as how we structure it, so I just wanted to present today, and then we would talk and see how to structure.
I, I can volunteer to help you, I have a nonprofit called Kaiser Knowledge Institute, and it's, it works towards continuous improvement of students, that's why I was asking the questions that I was asking. I've worked with the Science Center, I've worked with nonprofit organizations to build IT programs, to help students do artificial intelligence, IT training, certifications, things of that nature, and also with them, working with them to make sure that they strategically build their life skills as well, and to mental employment, so I can help you build your program. I would help you, love to help you do that, give you some resources. Also have a friend that has just written a book about single-parenting and parenting, she's actually on her third book, she's a counselor certified, so I will also connect you with her, but I think what you've been ready to do is very important, so I'm asking these questions to see how I can help you.
Yes.
To make sure that we, the community of St. Anne, we are a community, it takes a village to raise our children, so.
Yes.
I will help you do that, we can connect, and I'll give you the resources that I have.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll connect with them after the meeting? And Tim and chief, you'll get with them later, see what you guys can figure out.
We already have one of our police commissioners, who's an NFL player, lives right next to the station, and I know Paul would love to help out, and then Darnell Hill, who's our pastor for the Police Department, too, so I know he's always wanted to help out.
Yeah, I spoke with Darnell, and gave him a heads up, so.
His church is right up in the old plaza, so.
Oh, okay.
He'd love to help you.
Oh, yes, well, yes.
So where there's a will, there's a way, and thank you for bringing your idea to St. Anne.
Thank you.
We'll figure out the rest as we, you guys go on.
Okay.
The board likes the idea?
Yeah, I love it, yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right, before I move on, are there any other members in the audience that would like to speak for the board that I was not previously aware?
Two, I have two. Vic Rafina?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay.
Hey, Vic, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
I wanted to bring up the truck driving school up at Northwest Crossing. The noise that they put out is very, very annoying. The site is an eyesore, and I realize that they're trying to make money, so they're, they've got a hundred and ten billion dollars in that, they're getting some money out of it, but it seems to me that they have plenty of area in other spots on that, on that site that they could move that to, where it wouldn't be such a problem to the residents. that site that they could move that to, where it wouldn't be such a problem to the residents. I was an appraiser for thirty years, and I know that that is negatively affecting our property values. I just wanted to come up and see if I could get some conversation started, because I know you can't do this overnight, but anybody got any suggestions or? I don't want to talk to Ivan, and Ivan I think has talked to Matt.
I mean, the, the, that area is specifically zoned for a trade school, uh there are portions of the property which are not, um so I don't, you know, I don't think moving it um is going to be an option, um because it doesn't follow the zoning code, plus there are agreements with the land, you know, the landlord has agreements with the tenants for the parking in those other spots. That back area is the only area that doesn't have any kind of, of, I guess, restricted use from a tenant perspective, so. I don't think there's an option to move it, um you know.
Uh did we ask for maybe like a landscape wall or anything?
I could definitely ask them.
Trees, can we ask?
That, that fence or sound barrier would be right there.
I, I.
Off the ride away, but I mean, I could definitely ask them if they'd be willing to do something like that.
I mean, like those Christmas trees that are already there are really nice looking, if they could maybe extend that a little further up, that, that would be a nice barrier for the residents and cut down a little.
I'll call them off.
Well, there's something else along with this, and I don't, I, I've talked to Ivan about this, that I've heard those trucks going at two o'clock in the morning. Something has to be able, you have to be able to do something.
Vic, you know what time that is, that's the first we heard.
At two o'clock in the morning? Two o'clock in the morning.
I mean, I've, I've seen them, I've seen them up there pretty late, but I've never seen it two, two A.
Yeah, we've seen ten.
I've seen ten, eleven.
Yeah, I haven't seen eleven, but ten, but that's the way.
I live right across the street, it's two o'clock in the morning, I, I think it was a Friday or Saturday.
Are they moving them around or just?
I'm sorry?
Are they moving them around or just running them?
Oh, both.
And either way though, my, my opinion is that, you know, they shouldn't be doing that.
Didn't they tell us they'd be done at like six or something?
I thought it was nine, it was, the ordinance was nine anyway.
Oh, okay.
So they said they would be done around that, so that's definitely way too late.
So it's a nine PM ordinance, then we need to, we need to force that, please. Is that you or the?
It depends on us, and we'll, we'll do it with the double tag team with, with the Gleaners tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Vic?
Uh how, how do I find out what's going on? Do I just contact you or?
I, I can call you, I can call you right away, but, oh, also too, we're handling the parking issue on eighty road, that's been an eyesore, a lot of our officers are not, I wanna make sure the public knows this, um and it is frustrating for me as a leader, um we, nobody wants to hear this, but I said this in Neighborhood Watch, we are facing one meth house on every street, so we have been really focused on keeping our violent crimes down, been very successful, and also building those relationships like Dr. Kilbride said in the schools. Uh that being said though, sometimes our officers are overlooking cars parked on the wrong opposite side of the street, uh you know, small vi- uh violations like uh no license plates on cars in the driveway, stuff like that, so we have designated uh a traffic officer to handle that stuff, so we'll be uh making sure that we're paying attention to that too more, so that's, that's important to you, it's important to me, so.
Well, my, my, what I was concerned about with that is the uh handicapped people trying to use the sidewalks.
Absolutely.
Because I know, I know a lady who tries to walk that, and she's got a, she's got a, a bit of a problem with her, her legs. And, you know, to have her walk out into the street and get around them, it's not feasible.
Right.
That's the whole reason, that's the whole reason why we put the sign.
We, we've written them letters. We've written the residents' letters, we've gone by, we're always trying to give breaks, um but like I said, we can probably do a little bit better then, so we'll make sure.
I called Ivan this afternoon, there's, there's a duly parked on, completely across the sidewalk.
Oh, wow.
And, but.
I mean, I, I will, I will, I will say Vic, that since those signs been up, it's been.
Way better.
Way better than what it was before, I mean.
Well, I'm not doubting that.
It's been a lot better, I mean, now you might get people that come in and visit somebody that, that lives there, and they don't, you know, but I mean, it's, it's a way better than what it used to be.
Absolutely.
I understand, um my, I wasn't even gonna bring that up, but since it's brought up, I, the calls that I have made are specifically, well, not specifically, but uh most of them are repeat offenders, it, it's the same houses every time I call up there, so there's uh.
Called the non-emergency line then?
Yeah.
Okay.
There are four on the uh east side, and I can give you the addresses if you want.
If you can before you leave.
Yeah, I can.
Thank you, thank you.
But I'm more concerned about the, about the effect of my property value of those, with that truck school, so if anything, it can be down there, I, I'd really appreciate it.
We have a very good relationship with the Gleaners and um Bob and I both, and usually every time we've asked for something, we've, we've gotten, so I, we'll, we'll talk to them. Definitely the, the trees being planted there, I see that as a great option, and I think it would look good, even too, there's been complaints of some of the landscaping stuff, I've had three complaints now with our landscaper, so we can talk to them about putting the fence up, or if they just plant the trees all in that, um all in a row there, uh East and West side, I mean, I think that'll solve the problem.
Right, if you cannot get ahold of you, would you tell Ivan?
Absolutely, no problem, sir.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, man.
Before you, no, you're good, before I forget on Saint, old Saint Charles, who is, who is, is that American Water with that hole, with that freak, uh it is, it's really getting bad, I mean.
Yeah, so they had, they put a dig right, okay, so they should be out there in the day without coal.
Chief.
That's a great idea, because that hill, it's really.
You're gonna have to build, you're gonna have to build a wall, maybe.
Right, but I mean, I, I know, let's do little steps first, but.
Little steps first.
We'll talk to them, there's a lot of traffic coming um.
Apparently a lot of people go up.
From Northwest Airport End.
There's some kind of.
I mean, there's, I only.
Some kind of log mat at the top of the road that apartment people use.
We'll, we'll ask them, of all.
All right.
Robert Burwell?
Good evening, how you doing?
Hi, good evening, uh my name is Robert Burwell, I'm a uh twenty-three-year owner of a house here in uh St. Anne, and uh I'm here to give voice to some people that uh may not have spoken up already concerning the dust and particulates in the air around the construction of the erodes like St. Jokum and now Wright, and so I'm asking the city if there's something you can do to, or maybe have it baked into a contract with the, with the contractors to spray lightly several times a day, even up until the evening time, just to keep the dust down. I know a lot of folks are washing their cars, I'm not affected, I'm about fifteen feet higher than a block away, so it's not affecting me on St. Jokum, but um it's terrible out there, and uh I can't imagine having a family, someone that has a uh some breathing issues, lung issues, chronic, and having to deal with all that dust, so um I, I just wanted to bring that up and see if there's something that the city can do or.
We'll contact, St. Jokum is not a city project, it's a Missouri, American Water and Miski project, so we'll need to contact them and, and let them know that, you know, there's some residents who are not happy, um we don't have any control over that contract.
I've not talked to anybody there, I, I just, I just have lived through this and watched it since March, and uh it's, it's pretty nasty, so.
Yeah, it actually started last November, so it's almost been a year.
And I know it's exacerbated, cause there's infrastructure going in, so they're digging deep.
Well, that's the whole, that's the whole reason why your experience or what you are, I mean, we normally, when the city does a road project, you know, we don't do it that way, so.
Okay, that's all I really had to say, I just wanted to see if there's something that can be done.
Yeah, he'll, he'll have somebody contact them this day and see if we can't get them to spray it down a little more often. Whatever they can do.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Tim Conley?
Good evening, my name is Tim Conley, I live in uh one oh five eight oh Hobday Avenue, and I'm here to talk about the street, so I was here fifteen months ago, yeah, to talk to you guys about the problem with the street, we need to be paved, something needs to be done to it, it's horrific, um I know Ryan and his street department has come through a couple of times, when they have extra asphalt, they drop in some holes, which is great, I just talked to Ryan at the parade, I have another hole five foot, five inches deep in front of my driveway that every time I go to go across it, he said, next time he has it, he'll get some in it. My problem is, nothing has been being told to us of when we're even on the agenda to even have it fixed. I was told fifteen months ago to give this young lady my phone number, and I would get a phone call back saying, hey, when, when the list comes out, you'll get a call, never got anything. I just feel that you should, you need to let the, the citizens know more in the newsletters about what is the agenda, when our street is on the, what do I say, the calendar of when it's gonna be, is it twenty twenty-five, is it twenty twenty-six? For being one of the rated top three streets in St. Anne, I would think it'd be sooner than more. You hear about these projects being done, and I know they're not the cities, they're American Water, you say for St. Jokum, Wright Avenue is a government one, but that doesn't help us out.
St. Catherine is definitely done, and I know that your street is not on the list that we have through, and we've.
The list is on the website, by the way, too.
The list is.
So that's why I actually just brought, so I brought this up, yeah, I brought this up at our last meeting, we're gonna put it on the newsletter, you will get it for twenty twenty-seven through twenty twenty-seven, we were just talking about this, so everyone will be able to know, cause as I, uh we were informed, a lot of people don't use the internet or not internet savvy, so in the newsletter that we will be sending out to let everyone know, and then as soon as I know, I will definitely let you know, so I've been on it, we've been talking about it, uh making sure that everyone is informed, and also um to say that every street that is on those, in that project, is tentative, because things can change.
Yeah, I actually, I don't know if you're on social media, but I have posted those to Facebook several times, last year we were given the list through twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six, so we haven't been given a twenty twenty-seven list yet, I do know that your street is not on any of those lists, however, MURD and LIT are on the twenty-five and twenty-six, or the twenty-six, yeah, twenty-five and twenty-six list, so I can only say that we're kinda down there by you, and hopefully then twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight has something on it, but they have not gotten to your street yet.
Who, who decides the, the sequence?
We have an engineer.
We have an engineer that rates all the streets, and they're, uh so we generally do three types of work, we do a rebuild of the street, we do asphalt overlaying of the street, and we do what's called an novitship, which is a uh thin layer of asphalt for ceiling. Your street is a street that has to be rebuilt, those streets are the most expensive streets, your street will, will cost well over a million and a half dollars to rebuild, so the entire amount of tax revenue we get in from the uh sales tax is just over a million, two billion, three dollars a year, so we can't do big streets like yours every year, we have to save up money in between, and so, you know, there are other streets in the city that are worse than yours, believe it or not.
But yet, I still see other streets that aren't even as bad, that you guys are going, we're repairing those, so they don't get as bad as yours, but at the same time, uh we still have to suffer.
Because if we don't do those streets, if we don't take care of those streets, then they're gonna turn into your street, and what's gonna happen, instead of competing with getting their, getting your street on a list of three streets that need to be rebuilt, there'll be a, a list that has nine streets to be, be rebuilt, and there's no way we'll bring ourselves under that hole.
So see, there are some streets that are rebuilt like, like yours, like St. Catherine that got done this year, which St. Catherine is actually the reason that I actually pushed a TDD, cause I almost bounced into somebody's car driving on that road a few years, well, ten years back.
That's an everyday occurrence on my street, I mean.
Yeah, I've driven, I've driven your street, and I can dare to say that I have not bounced into anybody's car in your street.
Well, thanks to him, who's filled some holes.
Cause he filled some holes, he says MSD didn't pipeline on their street.
I know, and I, and I went through that, you know?
Yeah.
And I just, like I just.
There was a day when I would've said that your street was one of yours.
That will actually help you, that will actually help, when we get to your street, that will actually help that the infrastructure has been taken care of underneath the street, because the last thing we wanna do, and that's another thing that determines when a street's gonna get done, is what's underneath it, because we don't wanna spend a half a million dollars to a million dollars redoing the street, only to have, you know, in six months, the water mains breaking on the street. So there's a lot that goes into this, and I know it's, I, I know this isn't what you wanna do, but, but you know, we only have so much money, and we have, you know, we have a number of streets that have to be rebuilt, and those are the streets that take a lot of money, and I'll be honest, and I've said this before, the, you know, we had an opportunity to get ahead of this and, and deal with streets like yours about fifteen years ago, and the city put a bond issue on the ballot that was specifically for streets that needed to be rebuilt, and the residents voted it down, they didn't want to do it, but we didn't stop after that, because we knew what was coming, you know.
It was gonna be a profit.
That it was gonna be, that it was gonna be, that we're gonna be facing Armageddon, so we continued, we spent years trying to put together a less painful way to get the residents to, to uh, to understand that we have to do these streets, and that's why we did what we did with the Transportation Committee, it doesn't generate enough money to do every street in the first ten years, it just doesn't, but you know, we're doing what we can with what we have, we take advantage of grants, we just did last, uh tonight, that's a grant, that's eighty percent of the, of Wright Avenue is gonna be paid for by a grant, unfortunately, your street doesn't qualify for it, we don't make that decision, the, the federal government, the state does, uh whether or not it qualifies for a tip grant or not, but, so we have to come up with a hundred percent of the cost for your street, and we'll get there, it just may not be next year or the following.
If I sit here and listen to you though, it might not be for the next ten years.
No, it'll be, I, no, it'll be.
It's definitely not.
It'll be, it'll be within the next ten.
I mean, I've lived on that street now for a prob, I think twenty-nine years, I think my son's thirty, and I, I think I've lived there years, so twenty-nine years, and I've lived in St. Anne, I was born in St. Anne, I moved away for like two or three years, so I'm like, I've seen this, but like I just said, twenty-nine years on my street, nothing has been done, the opportunity was there, when the, when they put in the water lines, they tore up the damn street, that would've been the time to do it, if you ask me, but like I said, it was overlooked and it didn't get done.
I think that might've been done before we even had the TDD passed.
That was done before the, that was done before the TDD was in place, so we didn't have money for it, TDD's only, the TDD has only been in place for, this is the fourth year, really, the fourth year has been in place, third year that we've done actual copious amounts of street work.
And as far as major reconstruction, we did Jane, we did, doing um.
St. Catherine.
St. Catherine this year. Something on the, on the north side, what was that?
Uh the St. Leonard, St. John.
St. Leonard, St. John, the whole P over there.
Mayor, what you guys just said, Matt, it's whether people like it or not, it is a good explanation, I think that um what I'm hearing to is a lot of Mary Kay, but whatever you guys want in the newsletter, just like that, so whether people like it or not, the least you explain it.
And those are the facts, I mean, I wish I could sugarcoat it a little bit, but that's, cause we drive those streets every single day, and it is frustrating, so you hear it from us too, all the time.
Leave the holes there, it's gonna stop the speeders, that'd be great.
Speeders are his problem.
Yeah, I know, so.
I mean, it affects the, the city's vehicles as well, I mean, and the taxpayers, we have to pay for that as well, so it's not that we don't wanna do them all right away, but we have to work within a million, one point three million that we have to get it all done.
And you know I stay on top there with you.
Yeah, I know.
And I am a couple of doors down, so you feel your pain.
So she is suffering with you.
So know if it's anything that I'm, I'm here fighting and working, and uh.
It's a tough time, too.
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm not an easy win, right, but with this, it's one of those things that uh we have to look out for each other, and I always speak in community, right, so as we're looking to do our street, we have to take a hit, so someone else can get their street done, so we can, eventually, everything can be done as a community to make sure that the city, right, can pay for what we need to pay for, but also make sure that we stay safe, that's why we have Ryan, I call Ryan all the time too, and that's why he's fixing what he can for us, and we apologize, right, cause I'm there with you that we can't get it to where we would like it to be, we would love, right, for them to give us more money and for us to be able to fix it, and I'm with you, so know that, just a couple of doors down, Michelle is walking out too.
You know where you live.
Yeah, right?
Know where she lives.
So, yeah, but we, we.
Same, same, St. Francis would also love to be done, but they didn't have the underground infrastructure done yet, and they're waiting on MSD to help them.
Well, I mean, I'm, she's coming to try to voice my opinion, if that means anything, but next, I have one more thing, actually two, real quick.
No problem.
I don't think I, the parade, you know, I would go to it. I don't think, I, the parade, you know, I would go to it, sit down, relax, take my grandson out, have another one, just don't, probably coming tomorrow. Um, so I just, I don't feel that the Trump sign was the right platform at your parade, that's all I'm gonna say.
Wasn't my Trump sign.
Huh? Was it a Trump sign in the parade?
Still not my Trump sign.
I, okay, I'm sorry, the San, Sania had a Trump sign in, okay? Somebody put a Trump sign in the parade.
We had the Democratic Committee and the Republican Committee both in the, in the thing. In the past, we.
He was not there walking, that's what I'm saying.
In the past, we've had Claire McCaskill's bus.
Great, I don't know.
It's a freedom of speech thing, we really can't.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm just voicing my opinion, that's all I'm doing, I'm just saying, I don't think it was the right platform.
And I'm just letting you know.
And the next thing is, I think the chief needs to start tasting the candy, cause I got a couple of bad tips.
Hey, thanks for coming up though, it's serious, thank you. Yep, seems easy to be a keyboard hero, so harder to get up in front of that mic, so good job.
Okay, Chris, any other speakers?
Kelsey Green. Hi, hi, my name is Kelsey Green, um, I live on Imperial Garden, so it's old St. Philbrook, uh, Gardens apartment. Um, the beginning of August, I had gotten into a car accident, I was backing out of my parking spot, and I had a, um. Somebody who lives in the apartment complex, uh, hit my car in the back, I had my daughter in the back of the car, she's eight. Um, she was driving faster than the speed limit, the speed limit is fifteen miles per hour. She said that she was going slower, like under the speed limit, but, um, after all the commotion. Um, I had called the City of St. Anne to see if we could add some speed bumps in my complex. Uh, before I did that, I asked my, uh, apartment manager, and she said that it's the City of St. Anne, so then I had called. Um, and they said that they had tried to, um, put speed bumps in, but nobody was in agreeance, and we just got some slowed down, there's kids here. Um, I counted how many kids go on my daughter's bus, and there's twenty kids. Um, they all go to Drummond, they all play at the park, like that's an issue. Um, I've talked to other parents that live there, who've lived there longer than me, I used to live on, uh, St. Philbrook. Um, I had to move because I was renting from a homeowner who wanted to sell the house, so I moved over there. Um, it's just a lot of kids, and that's just elementary, bus. Um, there's kids who are middle schoolers, and then you have high schoolers, not like, high schoolers, not obviously across the road, but, um. There's a lot of people who speed in my apartment complex. Um, I can count on all my hands how many cars I've seen speed, um, I have to have talks with my daughter, and now I have to go outside with her to make sure that. She is looking both ways, along with every other kid that wants to play outside. Um, the little playground, it's not very big, but like, that's where they all go outside to play. So it's kinda concerning that there can't be nothing done with like speed bumps or anything, and I understand, like, um, I guess. One thing was having first responders come to be able to, I guess, come if there were speed bumps. So I was seeing if we can maybe put the speed cushions or the speed humps rather than the bumps. Um, because that allows first responders to drive over, doesn't really slow them down because of how big their cars are, rather than like an actual, like SUV or a.
The other, the other issue is it's plowing snow, so.
Well, that's why I said a speed cushion, because if it's a, if it's a bump, I understand like having like ice buildup or snow, but.
No, you can't plow it, you can't, you can't hit it with a plow.
Even if there's a cushion over it?
Breaks the truck.
The chief, the chief wasn't at that meeting when we discussed that, right?
So you, you, I'm Dan, you're the one that I talked to, and then I brought it up at the, uh, meeting and that, and, uh, and then I think we thought, we, we had concerned about it, of course, we talked about it, and I had. Ryan went over there and put the signs, that's what you're talking about. Um, and then we talked about doing light up signs and all that, but that would affect, you know, people in their windows and all that, so that wouldn't be a, a good one. We did talk about speed bumps, but, um, the other thing that I, I think we should talk about too is, you know, that, that, that's a dead end street. So, I mean, it's not a, uh, it's not a street like St. Francis where it, it's a.
Fair enough.
Fair enough, yes. So I'm just wondering if maybe, cause I know Ferguson just put in a bunch of speed bumps on like Woodstock, I'm talking like main roads, they put, they put these speed bumps in. And they're really big, they're not the, the, the small one, and I think you guys talked about it, that the bigger ones would be easier to do the plowing on?
Yeah, more shallow, are they more shallow?
More shallow, but they're, they're, they're pretty wide, I mean, they're like two and a half, three feet wide.
Yeah, just like the one on Grove.
Yes, but enough to where you gotta slow down to go over it.
Right.
I mean, even if there's.
Chief, would you like to weigh in?
I, uh, so first of all, I don't think that we, I see a lot of tickets being written on Imperial Gardens. So, and this is the first I'm hearing of this, so, so that's number one, we definitely need to have our undercover cars go in there and start writing tickets, that's number one. Um, I'm just indifferent one way or the other, sometimes I, I go back and forth, but I can tell you, the fire department is dead set against any speed bumps whatsoever. Whether you're for them or not, I'm just letting you know, definitely contact the fire department, cause they make a lot of decisions, especially when they're heading to save someone's life, so.
That's what's over there too.
One, one other thing you mentioned, I don't know if you recall, but with the, like, almost like the horse stand-up thing that we talked about.
Now that, now I suggested that, especially on St. Catherine, where, where, and I've seen this in a lot of, uh, so like if, uh, management would allow that. You know, they have those big, almost like sawhorses.
I know what it looks like, but it's a, my, the whole entire street is for parking.
Right.
So you can't put that there unless you put it by the dumpsters, but even then, like, and also, like, who's gonna call the police for speeding? I'm not gonna call somebody, I'm not gonna call the police, like, oh my god, someone's speeding.
But people do.
But people have also voiced their opinions for this, like, I've, even when I called the city before I spoke with, like, Mr. Murphy, like. The lady said, like, oh, you're the third call I've gotten this week.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
So it's, it's not like it's not being, I feel like, honestly, after my accident, I had made a call, and then two other people made a call. And then like I've had other parents come to me to voice their opinions on it, because, you know, it's, it's a matter of time before a kid gets hit. And there is a girl who, and I don't know, I mean, she's eight, so I can, I wanna take what she says with a grain of salt, I haven't spoken with her parent, but. She told me that last weekend she got hit by a car. Now, where she lives, it's around about, so if she did.
Down, down the end.
Yeah, so and like, like I said, like, you know, these kids, like, they can try to look as much as they want, but like kids are gonna be kids, they're gonna like not pay attention, and. If she really did get hit, and like, that's an issue for me and for every other parent who lets their kids play outside. And, you know, we have, um, cameras out there, but like, like I said, who's, they're not gonna be looking at the cameras like that.
I'll, I'll immediately do two things, one, I'll send a letter to, um, the apartments, and then talk to management, and then we will get, starting tomorrow, we'll get our undercover, uh, white drango out there, and we'll start writing.
Are there certain times of day that it starts more active?
I, I mean, I, I think what, it's probably all times day.
It is, like, it doesn't matter.
He go flying anyway, all, we all see it, right? So everywhere, so.
Even in the morning when I walk my daughter up there.
And he's changing his hours constantly to, you know, just to try to combat that, so, um, but we'll, we'll, we'll be right out.
Good time to get around when the school buses are getting put on it.
Absolutely, and during Christmas in the streets, right, we come there, there are a lot of kids, so she is absolutely right, we have to take that seriously.
So did you sign, did your management give you guys anything, signs regarding traffic or anything?
She just said, that's the City of St. Anne.
Cause she didn't say that she would address the residents or anything like that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Thank you.
But I guess going forward.
Can y'all put stop signs, it says speed bumps?
I mean, there's a stop sign there, there's.
See, more, more stop signs.
How many stop signs you own that road?
There's just the one, there's just the one, but I mean, there is.
There's one going in and out.
Right.
There's two yield cautions, and then they just put the new signs like children playing, but.
I think the flashing, I think flashing, um, will do good.
Well, no, you can't, see, you, you wouldn't be able to get away with that, because it would be right there by people's windows. Well, cause I mean, that road goes right next to the, the apartments.
Yeah, people on the end apartments.
Can't you put that in the middle then, or some kind of caution that?
We, that's what we were, that's what.
The other issue we had when we were installing signs is, there's parking spaces all the way down, so unless they park off some of those spaces.
Gotcha.
So we had to hang the, the children's signs on the existing yellow ballards at, by the dumpster enclosures, because we couldn't install any signs, because we couldn't put it in parking space. So unless they lost a couple spaces, we couldn't actually install any.
Would it be feasible to put two more stop signs on the road?
At least one in the middle.
You mean like midway down or something like that?
I feel like you could just put one speed bump, like, and that's, and it literally needs to be in the middle, because that's where majority of the kids are crossing, and that's where, I mean, like. If you don't wanna put it in the front, at least put it in the middle, and like where the middle is, the dumpster is blocking your view of, of, of your, the view of your field. So it's like when you're backing out, you can't even see because the dumpster's in the way.
So the dumpster's in the way, is any order to install that bump?
No, they've been there, they're, they're in the spots someplace they can't be, down the road.
Okay, so Ryan, if we put a stop sign there, could we put a crosswalk there too?
I mean, the, the road's not in best shape as far as painting a crosswalk, really, I'm sure we can probably figure something out. Uh, I mean, so you're just basically wanting to put a stop sign in again.
A crosswalk makes it illegal for, for them to.
And again, you're, you're losing spots, so that would have to be understood, the apartment complex is gonna have to agree to lose whatever spots it takes to install a stop sign.
So do, do they, do they have to agree since they're saying it's our city, street, right? They put it on us, do we, do they have to?
Spots, they have to agree to give up the spots.
Right, so I'm saying, what I'm saying.
I wouldn't let them give up a spot, I mean, no, I mean, that, there's, there's probably like, I mean, there's probably a hard time parking in there.
Right.
The street as large as the parking spots are there.
Correct, right.
What?
Start with the enforcement.
I, 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 I'm trying to be, I'm, I'm really trying to be strategic here, right? Because we've, then chief, that goes back to what you're getting ready to do to talk to the apartment complex, cause they're gonna have to give a little to get a look, right?
Yeah.
And those parking spots, if we're gonna talk about kids, we need to talk about two parking spots, if that's what it is to go across the street with the, with some paint. We can get, they should be able to give up two parking spots. And if not, the two people can come park on my car wash lot for the two parking spots, if it's to keep the kids safe, right? Cause I mean, and put a stop sign, because realistically, something has to give, and speed bumps is unsafe, right, for the fire department if there's a fire, right? So let's say that we can't get the speed bumps, right? But if we can get to talk to them to say, hey, let's do a crosswalk, give up two, I'll give you space over there, off your corner, you know what I mean? But we have to come up with something, and maybe a stop sign.
Let's start with the enforcement too, right?
So let's start, let's start with the enforcement.
And then start and we'll send a letter to every, every door.
Chief, do you send a letter? And we also meet with the apartment manager and see.
So would I be able to, I guess, get in contact with the fire department to see if, if something?
I would definitely contact the fire department.
Absolutely.
As a matter of fact, the fire department's working on a.
Do we know who owns the apartment complex? Because I've tried to contact the management of that apartment complex, and the young lady in the office seemed not to know who we should contact.
Oh, we got her, we got her.
She's special, right now.
So we have to, okay.
If there's a road that, that would, you know, benefit for a speed bump would be that one, because of how, how short it is.
Yeah.
And if we could talk to the complex and maybe see if they wanna, you know, invest on buying it, and we could say, hey, they put it in, and we didn't, but we let them put it in? I mean, that might be another way around it to where we don't have to worry about.
The other thing we could do is we could look, we could, we could look at giving the road back to the apartment complex, and it's a private road, and then they can do what they want. It's private, it's private property, then they can put it, they can put it in.
But then it will still cause an issue if there is a future, like first responder incident.
Well, I mean, they still have to respond to, they still have to call for service.
Right, but you guys are saying that the issue is having a speed bump in general is because, like, fire trucks won't be able to.
We can't put a speed bump on a public road.
They can, they just, they are, they are dead set against it.
Well, let me, can we, can we make it to where we could ask them to see if, if they could pay for the speed bump, and then we would allow it on our street? Because then they would have to be.
Well, the issue, the issue is, the issue is, there's two issues, one is the fire department, to get them to, if, if they make an exception or.
For that road, for, or whatever.
Right.
And two, whatever we put in, we have to be able to plow snow, we cannot have anything that's going to damage our, you can't see the speed bump when it snows. And you're gonna, you know, we get a driver that's been plowing snow for six hours and goes in there, and all of a sudden, we wrecked it, you know.
Isn't there usually a sign that says speed bump?
What?
Isn't there a sign that will say speed bump, a caution, there's a home to play?
Again, it's a blizzard, you can't see your feet in front of your face.
There's also these little kids who are running, and now you got a dead child, that's.
You know, now's a good time to talk to the fire department too, cause they do have a prop on the ballot.
Well, we'll start the enforcement tomorrow.
All right, and then also just a side note real quick, I know the guy was talking about the truck schooling, I do live right behind it, my window is open, and they are out at like two in the morning. Past that, just, you know.
Good to know, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, any other speakers, please?
There is a gentleman that has his hand up.
Someone else out in the audience would like to speak that.
I was just gonna ask, isn't there like a easement on the side of the road that you guys could put a stop sign on?
There's not, there's not there.
Not in the apartment complex, it's just, it's just parking.
So you don't get an easement on the side of the road that you guys own though?
That's where their parking spots are for a period.
You're blocking the parking spots.
They actually pull off of that road.
Right, no, I understand.
So I do, uh, I do have something for, for someone that, or, I mean, have we done with the audience, I guess?
Yeah.
Uh, so just let, this lady, I don't know, I don't know, I think she called some of you guys.
Can you use your microphone?
So, well, I mean, I think everybody's hearing my voice. Um, everybody, uh, she's on, uh, St. Boniface, and, uh, she had a, she got a citation here, I'll just, it's kind of a lengthy letter, I'll try to shorten it up a little bit. On September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, I received a citation for an unregistered vehicle parked in my driveway. The vehicle is questioned, in question was my eighteen-year-old son's nineteen eighty-five Volkswagen wagon. Uh, my son began working at fourteen and saved for over a year to purchase this vehicle with the goal of restoring it. Since buying the car, he has dedicated much of his free time to remodel the interior, fixing the power steering. Uh, currently, he is in the process of rebuilding the transmission, which has left the car, or the vehicle, inoptical, and therefore unable to, uh, license or register at this time. Unfortunately, we are unable to store the car in our garage due to several issues, including flooding and specific, uh, space. For my son to work on the vehicle, as a result, the car has to remain in the driveway. I'm respectfully, uh, requesting that the ordinance be amended to allow unregistered vehicles to be parked in residential driveways, provided they are covered with an, uh, a car cover. Um, and then when she means by that, she means like a, appropriate, uh, car cover that, you know, like it's specific for that car, not, not just a tarp or something like that. This situation has made me consider not only, uh, my son, but also other teens and adults in our community who share a passion for working on vehicles. Restoring cars is a constructive, hands-on hobby that teaches valuable life skill, uh, lessons such as responsibility, problem solving, and mechanical knowledge. It offers young people a positive, productive outlet, keeping them engaged in, meaningfully active, uh, rather than turning to less constructive, uh, alternatives. Uh, as an or, as an or, as the ordinance currently stands, while car cover is allowed, the license plate must still be visible. In case where a vehicle is undergoing restoration and cannot be licensed, this requirement, uh, becomes impractical. I believe that by, by allowing car covers without the need of license plates or registration to be physical, we, uh, can support those in our community who are working hard. Uh, with skill-building hobbies while maintaining the ethnic, uh, a bit, uh, appeal of our neighborhoods. Okay, so, uh, let me, let me shorten, uh, I believe this small adjustment to the ordinance would have a positive impact, not only on families like mine. But also on others who take pride in working on vehicles as a hobby or as means of developing important skills. I'm unsure of the specific process required to make this change, but I kindly ask for your support in voting to amend the ordinance to allow. For unregistered vehicles to be covered in driveways without displaying license plates or registration. Sorry, thank you.
So it sounds like we would need to adjust an ordinance to allow our car, car plates to be covered.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe if, maybe if they registered them with the city or something?
I would. Could they get like a. Could they get like a special permit or something, you know, some kind of a.
Like a restoration permit or something?
I mean, if you're gonna do something like that, I think you'd have an in-depth conversation. Because what it does is it, it, it becomes difficult for the staff to enforce, you know? So if you're gonna do something like that, then, you know, if you're gonna have a carve-out for somebody who's, you know, restoring a vehicle, you know, then you get into, well, okay, it's gonna be, uh, above blocks in the driveway. You know, so you're gonna have to cover all those bases when you do something like this.
You also have people that are gonna start operating businesses out of their driveways and.
Parts sitting everywhere.
No, I mean, I agree. If there's a way that, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I was just thinking maybe like there's some kind of way that we could.
You live across the street from.
Maintain, who are you talking, who said?
What?
Who said that?
Whoever said that, will they speak up again?
I said, you try living across the street from.
Right.
The vehicle's not been registered for ten years.
If you want to talk, you need to do the right way and come up.
Yeah. So it it sounds like the board needs to have a conversation on this.
Let's put it on the, let's put it on the committee agenda.
That's fine. We can definitely do that.
Okay.
But years ago, when we put the one we got in place, the problem was people would run into in lack of money, leave it there for none of how long, and that was a problem.
Oh, yeah.
Come and I saw. That's why we did what we're doing. That's why we got what we got.
So I have a question because I'm new to this. I like questions. Some questions. So I got the call from the young lady. Um, she called me today. Uh, she has seven kids. She gave me a perspective of her family. She has seven children, her husband and her. Uh, her worry is about her boys. She has teenage boys. She want to make sure that he stays busy. This is a comfort for her and her, her husband to know that he goes to school. When he leaves school, he works a full-time job as well. And this is a hobby to keep his hands busy, she said. She's had issues before, her family did, with other issues with, uh, children doing things that they have no business doing in our society. So she's asking if there is a way that the board can come up and say, hey, if they are restoring cars, maybe they have to come to us and we give them six months. And if the car isn't restored in six months, then they have to pay for another six months, right? And we give a special permit. And for those people that are saying that they're restoring cars, they have to come and apply for a restoration certificate or something we come up with, right? And those, and then they have permission to cover the car up, uh, or whatever. And then they don't have to show the plates. Maybe we do it that way. Um.
Michelle, I think we're gonna discuss this in a committee meeting, the next committee meeting. It'll be on the board and.
You can please.
Either way, either way, it goes, it's gonna need the adjustment of one of our ordinances. So we're gonna have to discuss and determine amongst the board if that is going to happen. It'll involve the lawyer and everything else.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to give some perspective.
Well, right here, Sam, while it goes.
Come on up, sorry.
You were a breath fresh air.
I'm sorry.
Let's, we'll let the resident talk and then we need to move on. Kindly.
Come on up, sorry.
My name's Charles Campbell. I live on the very corner of Saint Boniface and Saint Francis. You and I need to talk.
Nice to meet you.
You and I need to talk. Um, I got the same ticket twenty years ago. Simply for it. I do everything I can to stay within the law. I have a vehicle that doesn't get moved twice in three months. Today's the first time I drove it. I don't, I don't mind. It's licensed. It's insured. It's not derelict. I I'm tired of living, paying Sandy and taxes and living in Fort Stell. Because right next door was another issue. And there's another issue up the street. I just can't see it all the time.
You're still working on catching them. Cut one.
Something's been done about it, but it's, it's ridiculous that it took this long. And I I I feel sorry about the speeding up and down Saint Francis. There's one officer. He's got a lot of fire. I like the man. You're stretching thin. Why can't we get two? Two-day officers. Because I'm telling you now, everybody recognizes that white one. He's been sitting in my driveway, which I allow him to.
White car.
Yeah. Everybody stops. That white car ain't there? You're lucky to get a California roll. And if you don't plead me, I'll give you access to my ring video on the side of the house and see the whole street anytime you want.
Mayor, if you don't mind, the board, just real quick.
Please, go ahead.
Um, at Neighborhood Watch, I wanted to make sure that they also understood that there is a lawsuit that has come down out of Calverton Park. And, uh, forget the side about the chief, I guess, admitting stuff from search warrants and stuff like that. But what they're saying is we need to wait before we tow any cars, um, out of driveways. Now, if there hazard like on blocks and so on, and believe me, I love things to be registered and so on, I I agree with you. Uh, but there are people who have hand-me-downs, their great-grandfather's cars and so on, right? And if they're tarped, you know, I mean, that is where the Supreme Court is taking this up and saying, who are we as the police to tow these cars that aren't licensed out of the driveways? So I'm with you, but I'm just, I want to make sure that you and everyone knows that 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 is a, that is hitting the Supreme Court. And I'm not towing any cars out of these driveways unless there is hazard until that ruling comes down. Because I do not want to be involved in that lawsuit too. So there's a lot of faces here that that we're not at Neighborhood Watch. I want to make sure that you are aware of that, that that is why we're not towing all of these cars. Because we were, we were towing a lot of them and.
No, I was afraid you're gonna give mine when I got the two.
Uh, but but once again, we want to make sure we're doing things right. Working with people and Bob and his crew are doing a good job of making sure, uh, cars are licensed and stuff. But I want to make sure that once that lawsuit, um, is finished and heard and the ruling comes down from, uh, from the Supreme Court, then you'll be the first to know too in what we're gonna do.
You probably saw Hillsdale and you saw Tallwood and a couple of other cities that got hit on that.
Just just to your board about their hardship, they got a two-part garage.
So and and to your point, I I only can go by and I appreciate, I want everyone to follow ordinances, right? But I'm also a community girl. I'm one of those girls, and this is what I'll say to you. If anybody's breaking the ordinance and the laws, then yes, they need to be penalized, they need to be ticketed. But we also have different things that go on in different circumstances. So that's why I was saying, now, if her circumstance isn't the way that.
Where does that stop at?
So that's where we all come together as a community and each each other and say, how can we help?
That's what we're doing now.
Yeah, how do we help each other, right? So with her circumstance, we're gonna talk about it and how can we help each other? So.
Keep this in mind. I just, my driveway down a few years ago, it was forty-one feet wide, almost seventy feet wide. I don't think I can park it.
You said.
How many do you think I could park it? Keep that in mind.
Yeah, so so to your point.
So what is, so you're against the tarp?
I'm against anything that you guys haven't already done.
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is, so you're against.
Sure, drive through the Wensville, look at all the tarp.
Wensville?
Fort Stell.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to see tarp. They aren't allowed to park an RV out front, yet it still happens.
But I mean, you could still do a tarp as long as it's licensed and registered. I mean, that that would not be a good sort of.
If it ain't terrible.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't know. There's a lot of, you, or what is it, uh, old cars that they like tarping. There's a lot of them that are tarped.
Yeah, a lot of cars in my neighborhood just got two dark rides.
But I, I just, I just simply was wanting to see if you maybe, I mean, if there's something that you would be okay with and not okay with.
No. I'm not okay with anything that's not already in paper.
That's fine. But that's why we're up, like she said, I mean, that's why we're here to try to talk about it and try to see.
I understand. Everybody's got a right to their situations. I didn't come up here when I got a ticket to explain to my situation, but I didn't have a goddamn ticket. I didn't have a job and I had no way to fix it. I had to give it away so I could stay where I was at. I didn't come up here and ask for forgiveness.
And gee, I don't think she was asking for forgiveness for the ticket, right? But if you had, I would have been, I would have been here to hear your story and to help you.
I paid the damn ticket.
Yeah, I think, so I don't think it's the ticket. It is.
It's the person. I've experienced.
Yeah, it's the kid to say, how do we help our, so my biggest thing is just how do we help our community?
Michelle, Michelle, Michelle. Can we just add add this portion and we'll, we'll discuss it in committee next at the end of the month?
Yes, but I was just telling them.
Because we're not gonna come to it, we're not gonna come to a decision here tonight.
I just wanted him to understand that I wasn't against what you were saying.
We can talk after the meeting.
And I understand yours.
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for the way I came up.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Tim?
No, I'm gonna let Tim go last. I think that's, yeah, if you don't mind. And I know they've been very, uh, patient.
I was gonna leave yours here last.
No, 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 I think that's, not that this is, isn't important, but a retiree is very well too. Um, can I have Luckett, if you can, if you may come, come up? And then, Titania, done? Guys want to come up? Come on over here. Guys want to come on over here? Right here? So we're, uh, we're giving these letters of accommodation, chief's accommodation. And this is for the outstanding bravery and courage that you guys both displayed on September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, when you notified the Sandy and Police Department about an imminent threat to the Rittner School District. And before they give you a standing, um, ovation for a really well-deserved applause, I want to make sure that everybody understands that, um, this case that Dr. Kilry was talking about, the young man who was seventeen, the suspect, had a loaded firearm, semi-automatic. And they actually saw the post, notified us. When the deputy chief, uh, ran up there to Husky Academy, the whole detective bureau, we thought it was at the high school. So all the detectives ran to help the school resource officers at the high school. And when the kid, uh, was, that was in the car before he was going to go in and start shooting, um, he got out because he noticed the police car that came up to the scene, that drove up to the scene. Kid jumps out, runs around, tries to hide the semi-automatic firearm, fully loaded, one in the chamber. And, uh, Deputy Chief Ravens actually was able to tackle him. Uh, Mike, actually, right by, uh, back here with the spot, ready to take a picture, found the firearm along with the detective bureau and he was taken into custody. What, I want to make sure that this is how serious this is, that the the father, who was there for another meeting, we don't want to talk about right now, that he took off in the car knowing that his son had multiple rounds of ammunition and magazines that he was intending to start at the Husky Academy, to shoot that school and students, and then go to the high school. And so this case is so severe that United States Attorney's Office actually adopted the case for charges against the parents. And Sailor Fleming, the U.S. Attorney herself, reached out personally to me and said, what, I mean, what clockwork, what excellent police, and you're running the bureau right now, Blake, you're gonna make an excellent police chief hopefully after I'm gone. And, uh, and I will tell you that you heard Dr. Kilry, that to get mentioned by the United States Attorney's Office and, uh, and FBI, I think that is, it says exactly what it's about, that it's great, great work. But if it wasn't for you two telling the police, I don't even know how many lives probably would have been lost. And so we want to present you with these and give you a round of applause and also give you guys a gift card too. I want to make sure that you guys, uh, each have a gift card. And then the mayor found out about this and the board always does a good job. And I, I was, uh, preoccupied, stuck in, uh, North Carolina Asheville for ten days, unfortunately. And, uh, that's a long story. But the mayor, um, wanted to give you more money along with a patch and you deserve this. You guys, oh, thank you for staying over. Thank you for what you guys did. You guys are amazing. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Definitely. Thank you so, so, so much. Today would be a whole, whole new world if, um, you guys hadn't stepped on. Okay. Moving on, Tim.
Uh, can I have Tim Lang come up to the front, please? So just to let you know, uh, Tim Lang had his official last day with the city after thirty-nine years on September twenty-ninth. He started on April eighteenth of nineteen eighty-five. And if you remember eighty-five, Reagan was in office. Back to the Future was the top box office hit. Rittner had a state championship in track and field. And, uh, Rocky Balboa beat Drago up in Russia. So I can speak for, I think my staff, how great he's been. I've only had the pleasure of working with him for fifteen months. And he's a great guy. The building's always clean. He's, he's been a very special employee of mine for only knowing him fifteen months. I wish I would have had more time with him. We're gonna try to get him back for part-time. But we want to, uh, give you this, uh, award of recognition tonight. So the award reads, Tim Lang, congratulations on your retirement. In honor of a dear friend and colleague, thank you for your thirty-nine years of loyal and dedicated service to the city of Saint Anne. Your commitment to delivering excellent work ethic and service is second to none. And you have left an excellent impression with your peers and customers. Here's to your impressive career. We can't imagine working without you. You will be missed.
On my part, Tim always took care of me during my coffees with the mayor, made my coffee at every meeting. Always done an excellent job for the city and I really don't want him to ever forget just exactly how important his job was. So what I did was I put together a picture of all the things that Tim has had to take care of in the course of his life. With the updates, of course. Tim, I really appreciate all the work you did.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You get to be in the middle of this time.
Right in the center, there you go. Good job. Tim Brody, great job.
All right, we do not have a closed session this evening. Chief, did you have anything more?
Next month, we'll, uh, show video and we will have the officers, um, who took the gentleman in custody and some remarks probably from the U.S. Attorney.
Sounds good. All right, at this time, we will adjourn the meeting. Board, I need a first and a second?
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.